Good morning. We'll call the meeting order for Wednesday, July 10, 2019. Thanks everyone for being here today. We do have a guest with us today, Shirley McKeller's husband, brother Danny McKeller, who will lead us in the invocation and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Come on, Mr. [inaudible].
Shirley, our God and our Father, one whom your name be with and we have our very being, the God of justice, the God of mercy, and the God of love. Father, I come down there on this way that I know how. I come with gratitude and I come with thanksgiving. Ever so thankful for Jesus who hung between the twilights and two worlds that when they have life and that when they have new abundance. Not only, Father, have you given us wisdom and joy, you've given us the pursuit of happiness. So I pause, Father, to say thank you. Thank you for this beautiful city, Father, and I thank you for Dr. McKeller. I thank you for her efforts. I thank you, Father, for allowing her to become a part of the leadership of this great city. And I pray, Father, that whatever she touches, that spirit will come to fruition. And I pray, Father, that unity and love will always abound in this great city. It is in the name of Jesus that I pray, and I say amen.
Amen. United States of America, and to a republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McKeller and Joanne, you can, they have an event in the stateroom that if you want to go there and hang out because we're going to move item Z1, the zoning item, before we do E1. So we're going to go straight into the zoning item at this time. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to do the minutes first.
Move to the minutes of May 8th.
Motion by Linda, seller by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll move into...
There's two.
Move to group the minutes of May 15th.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I thought we were doing about the same time, I'm sorry. So now we'll go ahead and do Z1 and move straight into the item.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. This is a request to change the zoning to allow for a mixed office, retail, and residential mixed-use development. The property is located along West Cumberland, Old Jacksonville Highway, and the planned extension of Holly Tree Drive and Cherry Hill Drive. The adjacent properties generally consist of single-family homes on varied lot sizes, and the other areas are undeveloped. This would amend the future land use guide from single-family to mixed-use center. In 2016, West Cumberland Road was connected from Old Jacksonville to Broadway, and in 2018, Maple Lane connected Holly Tree to Cumberland Road in accordance with our master street plan. In April 2019, the property owned by Genaco was rezoned for a mixture of zoning designations that allow for the area to be developed as mixed-use, which includes single-family homes, townhomes, as well as office and light commercial uses. The applicant is requesting zone change to do very much the same thing. The applicant is requesting planned multifamily residential district to allow for the development of detached homes and attached townhome units on a single lot. For clarification, this isn't your traditional apartment complex, but this is the zoning classification that we have available in our Unified Development Code to allow for this type of density on a single lot. Through the zoning designation is multifamily, again, you will not see any request for this application for your traditional apartment complexes. The applicant is also proposing light commercial zoning nearest the Old Jacksonville Highway and West Cumberland Road, where C1 light commercial zoning is adjacent to single-family zoning. The developer will require, would be required to provide for a tight-beat buffer yard, which ranges from a 20-foot to 10-foot in width and varying amount of tree and shrub plantings. Neighbors in opposition to the request cited concerns with the potential impact to property values, the loss of trees, increased traffic in the area, and the multifamily development. The applicant held the neighborhood meeting on May 30 at the Faulkner Police Substation, and following the meeting, the applicant did make some changes to the proposal based on the feedback. And those changes included reducing the C1 light commercial to the area within a 1,600 linear foot of Old Jacksonville. And you can see here, Old Jacksonville to the left, and so it was reducing that C1 area there. Changed Track 2 from C1 to RPO, distributed professional office, and changed Track 3 from R1D, single-family attached and detached, to R1B, single-family residential. This will allow, this will now be only detached single-family with similar lot sizes that you see at Hadley Court, just to the north. Again, they did remove the apartment designation from Track 5, and it will now only be ground level entry, attached, and detached single-family or senior living. There is no longer any apartment-style zoning proposed. And with that, 35 notices were sent, zero in favor, 14 in opposition, just under a 3% protest, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by 5-0 vote recommended this for approval as presented. And the applicant and the agent is here today to answer any questions.
Would you all like to ask questions of Heather, or would you like to go ahead and start taking the cards?
Take the cards.
Take the cards, okay. John Hart, you want to come speak first?
I was the last one in the room, so it's proper for me to go first, I guess.
That's right, yes.
I'm John Hart, 1839 Bent Tree Lane. I am president of the Holly Tree Homeowners Association, and we have had a number of meetings with interested citizens, with our homeowners, with city council members, and others, and we feel that responsible development of this area is strongly supported by our neighborhoods. But we would like to see the density of the units on tracks, I think it was 4 and 6, to be lower, to eight units per acre, and we would like to restrict the access of these new tracks to Holly Tree Drive to try to minimize the traffic. We'll be coming back to you later, not today, maybe not next month, but we're forming a committee to look at the traffic issues on Holly Tree Drive that will be exacerbated by this development and try to come up with ideas to limit the impact on traffic in the area. This would include things like crosswalks. It'll include my recommendation for a roundabout at Cherry Hill Drive. It'll include a recommendation for no access for part of the development that's being rezoned to Holly Tree Drive, and only southbound access to Blue Mountain Boulevard for any apartments that are approved. So we'll be doing that later. But the main things that we're going to be asking for today is consideration to lower the density of several units or several tracks, and Mark Laugh Miller will go into more detail with that, and also limit the access, direct access, of traffic onto Holly Tree Drive. I have met with my board. We are in full concurrence with these recommendations, and I think if we can get the recommendations approved, that we're, the changes approved that we're asking for today, our communities will be behind this development, and we'll be supportive of this development. So I'll just stop there, and Mark is going to give most of the detail, but I will entertain any questions that you have.
Well, what we'll do then, this Mark's got the details, right?
Yes.
And then that Mark will come back up in a little bit.
That's correct.
Okay. Let me have, let's, let's have Mark Laugh Miller, Lock Miller, come up and let him do it, and then we'll reserve it, John, to call you back up.
Okay.
State your name and address.
Yes, Mark Lock Miller, spelled L-A-U-G-H-M-I-L-L-A-R, 7418 Prince Dale. You know, it's interesting having been at all the P&amp;Z meetings and city council meetings. This one, I hope, almost has a different tenor to it. I think as neighborhoods, and I'm speaking to Oak Hollow, Bishop's Gate particularly, and Holly Tree, we've kind of learned through this process, and quite candidly, we've tried to make this one as much social media-dominated and have tried to just kind of work through it with all the principles involved and come maybe, again, feeling very passionate. Don't mistake that for not feeling a lot of passion, because I've had a lot of one-on-one conversations, very passionate. But when we come out, did really kind of just say, here's what we're really thinking, and try to approach it in a more, maybe, kind of well-thought-out manner.
Good. I couldn't listen to next door Holly Tree anymore.
Okay.
I just stopped.
Yeah, and so that was very intentional on our part, and we knew we would probably not get as many people here, and you'd say, oh, Mark, well, that was a mistake. We just intentionally tried to do it in a different way.
Thank you.
Very much, you're welcome, very much a joint effort with John, who I knew in passing and gotten to know very well, Robert Justice, who would have been here but was on vacation, and some other leaders, but we also listened to just a lot of neighbors who were very vocal, but we tried to just have it more one-on-one, small-group meetings, if you will. And I don't know that from a time standpoint I need to walk through the four kind of guiding principles, if you will, but basically, they were to protect legacy trail.
Since there's not that many, we don't have the clock running, and that's fine, because since there's not as many speakers, let's just go ahead. If you want to take some time, go ahead, because Mr. Priestler will get that time as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you. But the first was protect legacy trail for the community, and again, our fault is that that truly belongs to the community. Certainly, for some of it, some of us, it's our backyard, but lady I was talking to lives in Holly Tree, it's not in her backyard, but she said, boy, I drive over there, I want to walk on that trail. I think in time, it'll be, really be valued by the community. So that was one of the, kind of, the concerns, the criteria. Then second was what John hit upon was in terms of the density under the plan, and I'll pull up a map that shows you the tracks that we're most concerned about, and they're all proposed to be zoned, planned multifamily, which I agree 100%, I've now learned, hey, that's not a problem, but it is high-density multifamily. I mean, apartments are a bad word, but high-density multifamily in its own way looks and kind of walks and talks much like an apartment complex, at least from a residency's perspective. So we focused on that. I'll get into the detail. And then, as John mentioned, limiting the ingress and egress on those tracks to where they were either onto Maple, in the case of one track, and then the other two tracks that had frontage on Holly Tree, having that traffic only be onto Cherry Hill once it's constructed. And then lastly, and this is probably maybe more of a Bishop's Gate, Hadley Court, but has to do with protecting our neighborhood, if you will, from the development, which we're comfortable with, the light commercial, as well as the RPO. And again, I'll get into a little bit more detail on the next slide. I may go ahead and, the first one, and there's only one issue that we have west of Legacy Trail. Now, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have any commercial, any RPO, but we're not contesting that. We recognize there is a need for that. It does adjoint some residential, and we realize there will be a buffer yard. What the developer did agree to after the public meeting was, and I will zip ahead, to, this is the track that I'm asking for some protection on, if you will, and it's outlined in blue. If you will, to the left, everything all the way to Old Jacksonville will be commercial or RPO. I certainly don't know the Mr. Rus or the development company's plans for that, but here's our concern, is that he owns all of that land, including the piece in blue, and if that is all clear-cut, if you will, or clear, which it needs to be for the C1, we're assuming would go before this little bit of R1B, and then we have the RPO, and if that land is cleared as well, the R1B, what we intended to be our long-term buffer, the single-family homes to be built there, will not be built, and we'll be looking out on RPO and C1 if that's cleared. So we want it in some way, either by deed restriction, because my understanding is that R1B is just R1B, and that we can't add any narrative or can't attach anything to that. It would have to be some other designation with a narrative to actually have something other than a deed restriction preventing. All we're asking for on that track is for, until it is platted, building permits are issued, then of course, he can clear it off and build houses. We're not wanting to restrict that. But up until that point, you can tell from this aerial view, heavily tree, and will be a wonderful buffer for Hadley Court, Bishop's Gate, from the C1 and the commercial. The rest of the items we wanted to discuss, we really wanted to reduce the density on, there are actually four tracks. John mentioned three of them, and there's really an error in this slide. If you look to my right, narratives to mirror similar Genaco track, the PMX D1 already mirrors that. So what Mr. Rus is proposing, Mr. Priestler, matches up exactly with what was approved for Genaco. So that arrow should not be there, I realize. But on the PMF, there are three key differences between what was approved for the PMF track for the Genaco. And just to refresh your memory, I'm not sure it's going to point up there, had a pointer, but over to the right, that, these two tracks, what would that be? The southwest corner of Holly Tree Drive and Maple, the two Genaco tracks had similar zoning designations, and they were on the southeast corner of that same intersection. And the three differences I noted previously. The maximum height for Genaco was two stories, 40 feet. The density was 10 units per acre, and there was not a 25-foot, but ultimately, a 50-foot buffer on Holly Tree Drive. There was a notation that driveway access was only permitted from that PMF side if all units have ground-level entry. I believe that, yeah, I don't want to mistake, that's my understanding from reading what was finally proposed and approved. So our request is, it simply mirrored what the Genaco, which virtually identical in many respects, track received. And then in regards to the other three tracks, we are requesting, these are closer to the residential, as you can see, and I live in Bishop's Gate, which is just north of this proposed PMF, he wanted to call it apartments, but PMF, and our density in that neighborhood is about six and a half units per acre. So in our minds, stepping that up some, eight seemed like a good number. Somewhat arbitrary, the answer's yes, you know, but again, that's what we're proposing for these three tracks. Tracks 4 and 6, again, you can see noted two little kind of shaded grids there designed to indicate that access from those properties would be onto Cherry Hill rather than anything on the Holly Tree. And then on the left-hand side, it would be the west side of tracks 4 and 5 would be to have that 50-foot buffer to protect Legacy Trail. That's really the only changes I wanted to just add. You can see a lot of C1 and RPO, and like I said, you know, from, I have a single-family residence in this perfect world, you know, I have this mental picture, we'd have no C1 and we'd have all these things, but again, we're coming to the table and saying, we're not protesting that, we understand that. It may not be what I would like, but these are the core things that just seem to resound with everyone. We pulled some things back, but this is kind of the core of the issues that we have and wanted to center on that. So be glad to answer any questions or...
Mark, I'd just like to thank you for being the word of calm during this round. You've done a great job. This map's great. You know, in my opinion, you haven't asked for anything that is not reasonable.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the density issue is going to be somewhere between eight and 10. If I talked to Planning and Zoning this week, and it appears that with the 12 they're asking for, there's going to be 58 additional units on Track 4 and 6, and that does concern me. But I just want to thank you for the great job you've done in the last few weeks.
Any questions of Mark? I think it was pretty clearly defined. Y'all have questions?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Thank you, Mark. Let's go ahead and, since that presentation was made in that fashion, Mark Priestler, do you want to come up right after and visit about that? Then we'll have three other cards, and then you and Mark might come back.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mark Priestler, Planning Concepts, 3815 on Mullard Road. I just want to go back and reiterate what Heather said. As we went through the neighborhood meeting before P&amp;Z, we made some significant changes because we did really listen to, you know, what protest was, what the issues are. You know, what's really important though to look is, you know, why do we do mixed-use developments? What's the purpose of them? We do mixed-use developments because they're more sustainable over the long period. We want to have developments that have multiple different uses, different size houses, lots, all of those things that make a development sustainable. If you go back and look at all of the mixed-use developments that we've done over the last 10 years, those have consistently developed faster than single-use developments. So there's a lot of reasons why we want to look at varied densities, varied lot sizes, and varied uses as we look at an overall development. Traffic is always an issue, and it doesn't matter what kind of use it is, whether it's commercial, residential, office, any use, traffic is always an issue. We always want to look at that first. There's a reason that the city spends a lot of time, you know, every 10 years, updating a master street plan, and it's important that as developers develop property, that we follow that logical system of where roads are and what connections are in the road network. So as we start a development and start looking at it, that's the, that's the key thing that we look at before we do any uses, any look, look at any of the different uses, is what is the master street plan say? And it's really important to follow that. The more connection points you have to any development, the better it is. It reduces the overall congestion at any given location. What you're trying to do is dilute traffic so that nobody bottlenecks at any given location. This development has more connections to it than all of Holly Tree does. It's important that you look at, the more connections outward, the less issues you're going to have at any one given location. Look at Oak Hollow, look at the Crossing, look at Oak Hills, same thing. We want to spread out connections as much as we can. So those are kind of the driving principles in when we start looking at the land use and how those uses are going to lay out. So as we looked at what came out of the neighborhood meeting, it was important to look at what could we change and what should we change to look at how the overall impact is. Reducing the C1 did make a lot of sense. Adding the RPO adds that buffer in there. That C1 depth is the same as what you see as you go up where Swan's Plaza is and going north on Old Jacksonville. So we mirrored those types of uses to make sure we buffered in. The change from the R1D to the R1B on that section just east of the creek, west of the trail, did that same thing as far as buffering. Now, one of the things I want to point out is that the PUR that was done for both Bishop's Gate and Hadley Court backed up to single-family residential zoning. It, it has a lower density, and as you look at the R1B, R1B has a density of 7.25 units per acre. So if you look at both sides below Hadley Court and Bishop's Gate, there is already, between what we're proposing and what was approved on the Genaco track, there is a part that already has a density that's 7.25. So it's stepping up from Hadley Court and Bishop's Gate as we continue to get closer to the arterials, both west and to the south. As we look at those densities to the east, one of the things I want to point out is, if you, if you remember the PXR, which is this section right here, this is part of the density of the track. So we have R1A around this outside, we have PXR through here. PXR are individual lots, but they're, it's got a density of 12.9 units per acre. That's already been approved. The tracks that we're looking at 4 and 6 are directly across from that. So they're buffered from Hadley Court and Bishop's Gate by both the R1B and the PXR, and there's a strip of R1A in there before you get to these tracks. The 12 units an acre is consistent with the PXR that's across the street, as well as the entry into Holly Tree, the PMF that's on the right as you come into the entry of Holly Tree. Those attached units are at 12 units an acre. So our densities along that track match what's been developed in that area. Now, when you look at our Track 9, which is the PMF that's furthest to the east, the difference between it and the Genaco track, that we're talking about this track right here, is that we reduced the density on Genaco because of this large lot, R1A, that's directly adjacent to it. Part of that is because those are the estate lots of the part that transitions from Holly Tree coming down into and getting closer to the arterials. It's also sitting up higher than the tracks to the west. When you look at the topography map, this track right here sits about 20 feet below that street, and it backs up to Flood Lane, the creek that runs through there. So the difference in the density is we have more topography to work with, so the three stories is to work with the topography and take advantage of the drop-off to the creek so you've got back views that look out over a greenbelt. The other issue, and the reason for the buffer, was that traffic coming up, the concern with Holly Tree was that there, that the people coming through here are doing this manner right here, coming up and going by here. So we buffered this for traffic coming through. This track is on the opposite side, and it's on the side that's going towards the commercial side. So it's not on the direct route coming from Maple into Holly Tree. So we are still doing a buffer, but it's a 25-foot buffer, not a 50-foot buffer. And then lastly, as far as the comments on the trail...
Hold on, just a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm trying not to interrupt, but I can't help it. So, yeah, I think on the Genaco, the part of the issue was, on that 50-foot buffer, was that y'all were still trying to do apartments when you came, when you came to the meeting.
That is correct.
And Rusch is not doing that, but y'all came with that, and so...
Yeah, our compromise was a lower density to the east for a higher density to the west, even though that...
Right, but by the time it was over, it, by the time it was over, it did get moved back down to 25, right?
Correct.
That's kind of how I... That's kind of how I recall it.
Yeah. And on that side, we're okay with it because it's, you know, again, it's on the pathway from Maple up, turning right, going into Holly Tree. So, you know, it fits in with what we're doing on that side because our densities are getting lower as we go up into the estate residential.
And how much, you said the topography was lower for the track nine than it was on the Genaco side? How much lower?
Say that one more time.
You said the topography was lower?
Yeah, well, it's 20 feet below the road. The hilltop on this side kind of goes up and then starts dropping down. There's a creek on this side of the... On this one, we're dropping down into the street.
By 20 feet?
So, this track right here is about 20 feet lower than the street.
Really? Okay. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. And then lastly, on the trail, you know, we think both Roos and Genaco, as the trail opportunity came up, you know, both developers were willing to jump on board and dedicate the easements and whatever was necessary to get the trail in because it truly is an attribute to the community and to any given development. When we're doing single-family residential, there's no reason to put a buffer between single-family residential and a trail. There's really no good reason or valid reason to put buffers between multifamily and a trail. You need to have, we do trail design and park design all over the state. We need to have openings. You need to have visibility. All of, eyes on a trail are the best deterrent to any types of crime or suspicious activities, anything like that. It's really important that the more they're open. If you go look at the Katy Trails and the bigger ones in bigger cities where you have development, they've turned kind of backwards and treated it more like a golf course amenity where you have see-through fences and things that take advantage of it, much like you see through Oak Hollow. So, it's really important that those things stay in place. And again, we're talking about multifamily. As we talked about the buffers last time on the west side, it was the trade-off of multifamily at 24 units an acre versus single-family at 15 units an acre or 12 units an acre. So, there's really not a justification for having the buffer, especially when the trail is there because we dedicated the easement to have the trail. So, looking at the overall, our densities, we feel, are very consistent with what's been developed through there. You know, 12 units an acre is a medium density, not a high density. High density is 18 to 24. So, it's not completely out of character, and we've already got the PXR. We have two areas of PXR that both have 12.9 units per acre that are already buffering from the north to the south. So, we feel this is a great development. We think all these uses, we have hammered out. We have looked at backwards, forwards, every which way since we started this process. And we think this is nothing but an attribute to the area. We have looked at the traffic every which way. This actually helps, this whole development, both this piece and the Genaco piece, help traffic out of Holly Tree, not hinder traffic in Holly Tree. So, all of this is being used right now as a relief route from Holly Tree because there are no houses in there, yet you have cars on it. So, it's really important to look at how, in the big picture, how all of these things connect together. As Tech Stock continues to look at plans to upgrade Old Jacksonville to six-lane, it's going to become even more important, especially for Holly Tree, that they have access through into the lighted intersections, which will be both Three Lakes Parkway and Cumberland Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if I've addressed everything that you have questions on.
I do have. Do you want to hear the four more cards first, and then call Mark back up, or would you like to?
That's fine.
Let's go ahead and get all the comments done. Bob Inlow?
Come on up. My name is Robert Inlow. I live at 7224 Prince Dale. I just walked in the door, and I'm here to, I'm speaking, I don't represent Bishop's Gate, but I am a resident of Bishop's Gate.
Right.
Is that where y'all are?
Yeah, we're talking about that right now.
Okay, all right.
You're in the right place, right time.
I don't know how I got, should have been to the bottom of the list. The proposed change would interfere with the property rights of contiguous owners due to increasing traffic in Oak Hollow and especially near our intersection, which I'm about a 15-second walk from, okay? This is a serious issue for Bishop's Gate, and I hope we have a number of people here today to follow me up on this. Some have already sold homes in Bishop's Gate. And I believe, but cannot prove to you, that it has to do with the fear of adverse traffic change in Bishop's Gate resulting from this action. And we are asking you to decline this action totally and to find another solution. You know, we do not want any multifamily in that subdivision. You can avoid our problem by returning Bishop's Gate to a comfort zone, which we were presented with when we purchased the property, that this is single-family. You look at Bishop's Gate from a real, and I've been in the real estate business all my life on different sides of it. I don't see a reason to make the change. I really don't. You know, you can squeeze a few more dollars out of it for some individuals, but Bishop's Gate residents, the property owners, are going to be the big losers. And we're here, we moved here to support Tyler. So, this really comes as a shock. The fact that this made it this far is a surprise to us. So, we hope you will turn this item down flat. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berkman? Gordon Bryson? Good morning.
I'm Gordon Bryson, 2205 Thornwood. I'd like to read my comments just so I can make sure I keep them brief.
Yes, sir.
I was one of the first to move in almost 11 years ago. I live in Bishop's Gate, section of Oak Hollow. At that time, we knew the rest of this section would be developed, and that in the future, all the land south, which is now under the rezoning application, would be also. Since the initial Genaco rezoning application was submitted in January, the majority of concern has been on the opening of Holly Tree Drive from Maple to Old Jacksonville Road and the traffic impact through an established residential area. On three different occasions, Mr. Robert Justice has presented an alternate plan, supported by using population densities and master street plan criteria for collector streets. The showway through artery, artery to Old Jacksonville Road is not necessary. Each time, twice at the P&amp;Z Committee Commission, and once at City Council, this plan has been rejected as it would not be in compliance with Tyler First Plan. This plan was adopted in 2007 and renamed to Tyler First in 2013. Apparently, some feel this plan is written in stone where it fits their agendas, but can be changed if it doesn't. The Genaco group submitted an application that included multifamily high-density residences that met heavy objections from residents of Holly Tree and Oak Hollow. Over 700 people signed the petition objecting to this high density. Rezoning of this track was rejected by the council on April 24th with recommendations to come back with an alternate plan that would be acceptable to all parties. Much has been accomplished through keeping this in dialogue between the residents and the Genaco group. Additionally, this applicant is favorable to the alternate plan for Holly Tree Drive. The present applicant has requested multifamily residences of high density that meet the same resistance criteria as the Genaco group application. And its last report was not favorable to the change to Holly Tree Drive. The Tyler First Plan stipulates single-family residences from immediately south of Grundy through a corridor paralleling commercial zoning on Old Jacksonville Highway to Cumberland Road. If this council respects the wishes of hundreds of Tyler tax-paying residents, citizens, and follows the provisions of the Tyler First Plan, it will reject this application with the recommendation the parties meet together to come to an agreeable and responsible zoning plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roos? Steve Roos?
Good morning, Mayor and Councilman Steve Roos, 3310 South Broadway. By record history, the Roos family and the Genaco family jointly owned this 400-acre tract from 1983 until November of 2018, and we divided the property between the two families. So, we've owned this property for more than 30 years. We pay taxes on this property for more than 30 years. You know, it's, you know, Genaco recently zoned their property, and today, through Roos, through West Cumberland LLC is requesting zoning on its acreage. We submitted our original zoning application on April 1st. On May 30th, we met with the neighborhood and exchanged a lot of information. In response to that meeting, as Mark said, we made several significant changes to our application, including removing apartments from the site, including changing the property next to Bishop's Gate from R1D to R1B, and changing C1 to the RPO zone. So, several significant changes came out of that meeting. Planning and zoning approved our revised application on June 1st unanimously. So, just a couple of more points. The zoning we're requesting is a result of numerous meetings over a number of months with city staff and neighborhood meeting. The zoning east of Cherry Hill is consistent with the zoning approved by council for Genaco, although the narrative description of a zone tract may be slightly different. The zoning west of Cherry Hill is consistent with the Tyler 21 Comprehensive Plan approved by council in 2007, and that plan was updated to what is now the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan in 2014. The Tyler 21, I'm sorry, the Tyler 21 Comprehensive Plan and the more recent Tyler First Comprehensive Plan show the land west of Cherry Hill as a mixed-use development, not residential, mixed-use. Paraphrasing from Tyler First Comprehensive Plan, mixed-use developments are designed to create a compact neighborhood cluster where land uses are arranged to provide a compatible land use transition. These areas can afford the opportunity to provide more walkable environments and better land use transitions by creating more fine-grained mixture of land uses, including allowing vertical mixed-use development as well as horizontal mixed-use. The zoning west of Cherry Hill is exactly what these comprehensive plans envision. Mixed-use development containing various types of residential uses along with office and commercial uses.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like back up? Mark Priestner? Mr. Breesner, would you come back up? And Heather come up?
Can you answer this question? So, when the Genaco part was being rezoned, that came out of P&amp;Z. It was not a seven of one.
Okay, Mark, my question was that the, I believe what Ms. Roos just said, that after they dropped off the apartments, did P&amp;Z vote this item seven zero?
It was five to zero.
Five to zero.
It was unanimous.
Okay. Now, during the previous zoning item with Genaco on this, what did it come to council as a vote? Y'all remember?
Five to...
Y'all?
Yeah.
Five to one?
Yeah, it wasn't unanimous.
Well, one was the same. I think it was a five, but one was the one extension.
Okay.
And the seven was a five zero.
Figure that out. Figure that out for me. Okay, Mr. Priestner? Four to one, right? Okay, Mr. Priestner? Mark, when we had the apartments on the plan for Genaco, just out of curiosity, what would the density be for apartments?
24. 24 units an acre.
And so, that's been, that was pulled from that plan, and it's been pulled from this plan?
Correct.
So, on track four and six, just to clarify, y'all were wanting to do 12 units per acre.
Correct.
And I realize PXR doesn't have a density...
Right. It just has a minimum lot size.
So, is what you're proposing on four and six going to look similar to what?
Yes, it's actually slightly less dense than the PXR, but it'll be very similar.
And then track nine, where you're asking for 15 units per acre. Explain how the topography changes the density.
Yeah, because what we want to do where we have topography, where it's dropping off, if I can probably pick this up. Can we do this? Okay. As you look at...
The topography on this side.
Here, this is, this is the creek through here. This has got the sewer line that you're looking at that comes down and goes over to the sewer plant. So, this is the lowest area outside of the tributary that's overall this side. So, as you look at this, here's the road. It goes, this is the top of the hill right here. So, we're 10, 20 feet lower as we get into here than that point right there. So, it's dropping away. So, what we want to do in a case like that, where we're dropping down, is take advantage of more height. So, that's why it's three stories, because as we drop away, it gives you the opportunity to go a little bit skinnier, a little taller, because it can't be seen from the road. It's not going up from the road, it's going down. So, it gives the appearance of the same height as a two-story on the opposite side, but it's a three-story. So, we go a little bit denser because we're a little bit skinnier, a little taller, and taking advantage of, and again, it's, we're not backing up to anybody. We're backing up the flood plain that's undeveloped.
You were also, if it is the assisted living unit doing access on Holly Tree?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, only single-family properties through this entire development, the only way to access Holly Tree Drive is if they are single-family properties?
So, I met with Robert Justice a couple of weeks ago, and he brought up the roundabout issue. And I don't think that's something that we can make you do, but if that was in the project, what would that do to traffic flow?
It would actually help. I mean, we've talked about that. This is the area that we're... Okay, so this is the area that we're talking about that would have a roundabout if we did one. This is what it would look like constructed in there from just a quick, you know, here's what it looks like, here's what it does. The benefit to roundabouts, just in general terms, is that they slow down traffic speeds, but they speed up traffic movements, if that makes sense, okay? So, what it does is it's a traffic calming device, but it's more efficient than four-way stops, three-way stops, things like that. So, they better control the overall volume of traffic, but they lower speeds. So, if you started looking at something like this, this is the commercial areas. We come back this way. What it does is it forces somebody into the... What it does is it forces somebody into the turn. Their natural inclination is going to be to continue south because you've got to make a concerted effort to move back up to stay on Holly Tree. So, it would actually help. While it can't be part of the zoning because that's a right-of-way issue, you know, that is something that we could definitely look at that, that would help, and it would help calm down traffic as well.
And, and that would impact, I guess, you're talking, this is a Cherry Hill, right?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so if you do that, that's affecting not only Mr. Rouge, but?
Genaco. Right, it affects all four of them.
And you represent them.
Right.
Right? Are they agreeable to do it though?
Oh, I, I think everybody would be agreeable to look into it to see how it can be done.
Because I, I think that's actually a good idea, that's the first time I've seen it on paper. It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's, it's going to take more to nation with the city, but I think we could look into it, for sure.
Yeah, the city didn't have the issue with doing that, right?
No, sir.
No?
No.
Okay. John, you raise your hand.
Uh.
You have to come back up front though, I've got to.
I have a question.
We're not done, we're not done with you, Mr. Prieston. But John, you raised.
I believe I initially came up with the idea of the roundabouts.
Okay.
From visiting Sedona, Arizona. They have one major highway that goes through Sedona, and it's congested all the time. But the traffic moves freely, but slowly, because there are three roundabouts in different places that you have to maneuver. And so, I think this makes sense, not only Cherry Hill, but if it can be back, backdated a little bit to Maple Drive, I think it makes sense on Maple too. I don't think it's a major change to do that. Plus, those roundabouts can be landscaped and made beautiful and be pleasing to the eye, in addition to rerouting traffic and keeping it from stopping, building up, and then turning. It's just a free flow all the way through. I think that makes a lot of sense.
John, I have a question.
Yeah.
If we do the roundabouts, are you okay with access to Holly Tree Drive of tracks four and six?
Access to Holly Tree.
To Holly Tree Drive for tracks four and six.
I still think that having the access to those tracks on Cherry Hill and Maple will result in a lot of people going south off of that access instead of going Holly Tree Drive. And I think that ingress and egress from all of these tracks, it's beneficial to go on your feeder streets instead of your major thoroughfare.
Thank you.
You just think about people coming in and out of those tracks onto a free-flowing traffic on, on Holly Tree Drive that's going from Grandy all the way to Old Jacksonville. The traffic going in and out of those entrances is going to be dangerous, it's going to be frustrating to people trying to enter the flow.
So, you don't think the roundabouts are going to solve the issue?
I think the roundabouts will slow the traffic down, and I think the roundabouts will stop buildup at those intersections of cars waiting to turn. So, I think it makes a lot of sense. Let me ask Mark a question, but don't leave.
Yeah.
So, if you, on four and six?
Will leave the microphone.
On four, six, and five?
John, leave the microphone a little bit.
But don't leave.
Switch voices.
Are you going to have ingress or egress to, is what you want, Holly Tree Drive and Cherry Hill?
Yes. If you look at, if you look at track, I'll do this, I got chastised. If you look at track six, the length of the track, if you, if you only did one entrance into this and stubbed it out here, you would actually cause more problems into flow into here. It needs to have evenly distributed access. This is single-family residential, let's keep going back to. It's the same as this, where we didn't limit access from this PXR, we don't limit access, it's not like in Bishop's Gate, you said, okay, here's the same collector on Bishop's Gate, we didn't limit access to Bishop's Gate, I mean, to Dooley Oaks or Bishop's Gate. It's not, this traffic, as you start looking at this area, who's on that road is all dependent on where they're going. The majority of the people going here, they're headed to Broadway, they're coming down and going across it, they're heading up this way, they're going this way. There is very little cut-through from being generated in here. Holly Tree Drive is being used as a cut-through coming out of Holly Tree, not into Holly Tree.
So, but you will have an exit, excuse me, Don, an exit on Maple for track six, right?
Correct.
So, Maple and Cherry Hill will have access to track six?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry.
Cherry Hill and, I mean, Holly Tree and Cherry Hill.
Okay, yeah.
So, what do you think when you see this, John, where you, on six, where you've got to go all the way down that track? Do you think the, the roundabout would deter you from going on four?
I think not, as, as long as the street can be planned with turn lanes, say, like on Broadway where you go to a center lane and turn left, or, or something like that, where traffic is not stacking up in the traffic lanes, the traffic that's going to be turning into those areas is stacking up in a middle turn lane, or a right-hand turn lane if it's going the other direction. So, my question is, is that, is that possible in that street plan to have turn lanes for weighted traffic going into those tracks?
It would depend on the amount of traffic that's being generated off of there, is, that's all it's part of the engineering on the traffic side.
I have a question for Mark. I just want to verify the numbers. On your map here, you have 63 units on track four, 109 units on track six, and that's with a density of 12, is that correct?
Yes.
So, what we gave to Genaco would generate 10 units per acre. Want to be sure I got my numbers right, or 109?
It'd be 91 there, 53 here.
63, yeah. So, 100 and, so that's 58 units, the difference between 10 units per acre versus 12 units per acre.
He has 30 units, just quit.
172 versus 114?
No, 100, okay. Before, okay, what were you before? 109 and 63?
Uh huh.
Is what?
172.
And 91 and 53 is what? 140 some odd?
114 is what I got at 10 units an acre.
10 units an acre is 5.3 acres, 53 units. 9.1 acres, 91 units.
So, 53.
So, 140, whatever that is.
144.
No, she, she's talking about the difference between 10 acres, 10 units an acre and 12, correct?
Right.
So, I'm going to ask everyone as best you can, come up to the microphone so that we can be recorded and make.
So, 28 difference, difference in the number of units on track four and six.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
I'll just say that Mark said that the way we came up with eight is just kind of a guesstimate or a stab in the dark, complete compromising between Bishop's Gate and what had been proposed. I can't speak for these people out here, but for myself, I think the 10 units per acre would be an acceptable compromise.
And I think the numbers I had might have been eight units an acre.
Yeah.
So, what we gave to the Genaco group was 10 units an acre?
I think if we mirrored that, Mark, you okay? I think we'd be all right with that.
Okay. You have, we'll call back up, Mark Prieston. And does anybody have any more questions for John?
But what, what tracks did we give Genaco? 10, 10 per acre, track?
Just this track, right?
Just the east, the one east of Maple? That's it. It wasn't, that's the only one.
That's the only one that runs Holly Tree?
No, they have all, this is 12.9, which runs Holly Tree, access points, 12.93 here runs Holly Tree, access points. R1B through this section, 7.25, backing up to O'Callow, R1B 7.25 backing up to O'Callow. There is no direct access from Holly Tree in any form or fashion to have a quarter Bishop's Gate.
So, we've actually mirrored Genaco on track four and six?
Yes, from what's across the street. Genaco, if you're saying we're mirroring what's adjacent to it across the street, yes.
Mayor?
Sure, Mark, come back up. Is that okay? Yeah?
I anticipated this might come up, so actually, my last slide, I didn't put it up. How, you got anything? This more highlights the, the two, I believe it's.
EXR.
EXR, EXR. The, the two EXR would be referencing. I, I had several discussions, and Mark was not in, with the Genaco group. And I guess what I feel I was lost to some degree in the discussion is that what wraps around those high density, that the one to the left of the floodway, if you will, that says R1A, large lot, 27 acres, that was part of a 45-acre tract that was being rezoned. 27 acres of it had very large R1A, and I guess we viewed it as a package deal, if you will. And, and because there was such an overabundance of the very large lots, we said, okay, as a trade-off, as we discussed, access to Holly Tree, the very same concerns, to, to just kind of isolate it out really doesn't take the big picture. And the same thing holds true to the other tract, there were a significant number of R1A lots, very large lots, they were kind of part of the mix. And so, in my mind, it's all the apples and oranges because on Mr. Rouge's proposing is just pure multifamily. Except for the one little three-acre tract that I do appreciate being given.
Right. Well, Mark, what, what, what was important to me during the last, on the Genaco side, was when you start talking about those R1A, the reason I wanted those there, and I think everybody did, is it was like kind of what was behind it and near it, right? Because you look at Dooley Oaks, they already had lots set aside, similar size, and really, it, it worked out great for Bishop's Gate to have an R1A out behind it. And then for the, I don't even, I never remember, is that Farm, Old Farm Road or something?
Or.
Is that what that is? You know, and that backs up to, to R1A. So, I think that's the reason so much of that R1A was put in there, and then the, then the other R1A on Holly Tree Drive was, I think, a big, big help, is those estate lots that had wrapped into there. But I'm, I'm not so sure that, that when we were looking at it, we were looking at it on an overall type. That, that, the same frame that you, I understand your logic, but that's, I wanted to just express that. I looked at it from making sure that we were matching lots, and it was doing.
And Bishop's Gate really ended up being better.
Right. Just not going to bring it up, don't seem negative. Another matter, the public meeting was brought up, and you know, these things were brought up, and I can't deny Linda can back this, the meeting was set for a Wednesday at 6:00. We got notice of it on Monday. I remember it as a neighborhood, okay? And so, and Mark emailed me on Tuesday morning. So, and we had over 100 people show up, but again, input that we provided was with about $48 notice. Then there, then there's been weeks and weeks, if not months, and so certainly, there are other things. We had more time, I think perhaps we could have presented more of these ideas, we simply as, you know.
And I have a question for either Mark. How many units can be built on the property north of Holly Tree Drive?
On the, the PXR?
12.9 units per acre.
And how many acres are there?
I don't, I don't have that for me.
It says there on the bottom, 13.5, 13.5. It doesn't specify, correct, Mark? It's dimensional standards, and you know, you have to kind of understand the language, you know, what does that translate into? I'm not an expert like Mark yet, you could also explain, like, you're just have limitations in mathematically be able to do it, but the topography and the limitations that the height and width may limit what you can actually do.
Okay, thank you. Mark? Do I need any questions?
I've got one, one last one. You're not going to like it. You know, with track four and six, I think we've been consistent with what's north of Holly Tree Drive. I, I think what may have some of the folks a little tense is track nine at 15 per acre. Can we just be consistent with four, six, and nine and just make them all 12 per acre?
Yes, we could do that.
Again, track nine, 12 per acre.
So, Don, you realize that if we make it 12 per acre, that's 346 between the four and six and the one to the north. 346 units, they're going to be accessing.
They're also, they're also going to be accessing Maple and Cherry Hill and Cumberland.
And Old Jackson.
Not all these people are going to be getting on Holly Tree Drive.
That's correct, and I like, I like the roundabout at Cherry Hill. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to say it's a good idea on Maple, by the way, because if it's, if it's pushing everybody to make a right turn, it's going to make a right turn on to Holly Tree going out.
The other, Maple is already dedicated as right-of-way to the city, so that one would be, the city has the right to do anything they want in their own right-of-way, so really, that's something the city can study.
The one in Cherry Hill really, for the commercial stuff, it really would, I think, benefit by taking people to Holly Tree and pushing them out Cherry Hill. I actually did. I think that's a good idea. So, I, I, are there any more questions, or are you all going to just sit and talk about it for a minute? Because, I mean, I, on the track nine, I, I don't think I took into consideration in, by wanting them to do, is similar to Genaco, I don't think I took into consideration the topography. And I think that's a fair request, and I, I think he just, Mark just committed to go down to 12 units on that.
And are we still talking three-story?
Well, I mean, yes. And I, and the topography is the only reason that I'm comfortable with that. I don't, I wasn't comfortable with that coming into the meeting because I didn't understand the topography, but I'm comfortable, sure.
If you drive out to Holly Tree Drive at Maple Lane, if you look to the west, you'll see that the property drops off significantly into the, to the creek. I mean, it's very apparent, it's, it's, and it's relatively flat to that point.
Yep.
Steve?
Yes?
Staying at three stories for that piece?
Yes.
It's not going to cause any privacy issues with any of the other tracks around it, correct?
Well, it shouldn't, I mean, if it causes a privacy issue, it's going to cause a privacy issue to the people to the north of us, which is Genaco.
Right.
You know, so it's not going to cause Bishop's Gate.
Right.
A privacy issue with the people that are further north on Old Farm Road.
Sure.
So, it's, I don't, I don't perceive it to be a problem.
So, three-story on four, six, and nine?
Yeah, we're just talking about nine.
Nine, 39.
Four, six, or two stories.
Yeah, we're just talking about nine right now, and only access to Holly Tree if it is residential.
Ground-level boundary. Ground level entry.
But still 12 per acre?
Yes.
But if it's, if it is the assisted living, senior living, then it will be accessed from.
Only to the side.
I'm writing this down because I know staff is going to need to write this down too, right? Are you writing? Somebody writing? Okay, and then one of the requests that Mark Lockmiller just made was on the R1B track that you don't clear, I guess you just put in streets. You're going to have to put in streets. And then you just made trees on lots. What is?
Yeah, there's actually already an ordinance in place that prohibits the pre-development indiscriminate clearing of trees. So until the plat is filed and plans are approved, there is some clearing that can be done, but it requires you to leave a buffer. You have to mitigate for it. If you leave it too long, there's a lot of things that are already in place. There's no intention to go do anything until we're ready to go on that track. Since Holly Tree Drive is not in there yet, we're a long ways off. So you wouldn't just go clear it.
Yeah, it seems to me that, like on Dooley Oaks, for example, any lots they have in there, they all have the pine trees remaining.
Right. So then, and this would require a clearing and grading permit from the city prior to do it.
Right, so, but I mean, y'all are in agreement to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Because Mark, I don't think it's a deed restriction or anything I can do on that, but if they said it, they'll do it. There hasn't been any discussion on, well, I guess, now the power line easement, how wide is the power line easement?
A hundred feet.
A hundred feet?
Fifty feet on both sides.
Fifty feet on both sides? And that is currently the, Mr. Bruce, how about Mark?
Well, I mean, yes, it's a hundred foot, a hundred feet wide, the trail, the end is certainly easement. So it's like it's 50 feet on your side.
Right, that's right.
Mark? You did Ocala Plains, I believe, and is it called Headley Court on the other side?
Mm-hmm.
Where do those property lines go to?
They actually go five feet inside of the easement, the TXU easement.
So there's not a buffer?
No. There's the opposite. There's an overlay.
Yeah, well, it goes inside?
Yeah, they go inside.
Oh, well, don't, yeah, don't, don't start that.
But with the easement, with the easement, because you're talking about, you know, the, yeah, exactly. So you can have property inside that easement, you just can't build anything inside that easement. So thus, the trail is, we're lucky to have been given permission for the trail, it's a flat surface on there, but it creates its own buffer in the way that it acts as because of the fact you can't do anything.
Right.
So it's a hundred feet.
The reason being is the HOA retained the right of five feet of landscape as the trail went in to make sure that it kept a consistent good look as the trail went through.
Okay, so then, I guess, one of the buffer discussion always seems to be around if there were apartment complexes. And so track five was originally going to be a apartment, but it is not.
That is correct.
And it is, you said 12 units?
Correct.
Per acre, is that right?
I think so, yes.
Which one? Track five?
It's 15 per acre. That was 15. It backs up to C1 and what will end up being some kind of non-residential on the west side.
So you got, you got track four one and track six?
Are 12.
Three, a two-story. And track nine, you found in 12.
But a three-story. A track five is three-story and 15 units per acre.
Right, and it is backed up to C1 and has RPO across the street.
Correct. But it will be single family.
And how many units?
It's 15 units an acre.
And four, track four will be on the other side of that roundabout.
Correct. The roundabout would be between six and four.
Right. Okay, are there any other? Any other questions, comments?
I'm okay with everything they've done, and I realize they've made a lot of concessions. My only concern is 346 units coming on the Holly Tree Drive from four, six, and the EXR. I just think that's really high density.
I just see them going the other way. I mean, if you want to get out of there, you go the path of least resistance. And I think that's going to be Cumberland Road. But I'll say this to John and to Mark, Mr. Bergman, and to all the folks at Holly Tree. I think the way everybody's reached out and has communicated this last time around has been so much calmer and so much nicer. So I just want to say thank you for doing that. You know, I guess we've got to come to a closure one way or another. So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Z1.
Subject to, let me ask you, you'll amend that motion, okay?
Yes.
Subject to, on track nine, if it is sealed, assisted living facility, the only, the access would be only via Maple. And the density is lowered to 12 units per acre. And the other two items are purely a request and I think we have, so that would be amended to the motion.
Right there, right?
Was there any other items that we were going to?
Would, Mr. Mayor, would you like us to, as far as to kind of state what the changes that we've heard so far here and?
Yes. Yes, I'm sure we do it right.
I think you would.
Okay.
I'm not doing so great.
So what I'm hearing is that maybe a proposed amendment to the motion is for track nine, if it is senior living or assisted living, that the only access would be off of Maple Lane and that the density is 12 units per acre. I have heard other discussions about some requests that would be more of a gentleman's agreement.
That's correct.
And not part of the motion. And that, that dealt with the clearing of the R1B and then the roundabout at Cherry Hill and Holly Tree.
Correct. Which I think is a great idea. But those two have to be on the general request list because we keep them required.
You know, the traffic signal, we will need to just to kind of make sure that it is engineered and built so that as we know.
I think we're.
Yes. The traffic, yeah, the traffic signal. There'd be a way of the fire engine, a way of the fire station at Cherry Hill and West Cumberland. And I need to make sure that I can be able to get my engine into Holly Tree for emergency purposes.
Yes.
So.
Without it.
We'll need an engineer.
Without going on people's law.
Without going on people's law, people having to go the long way.
Okay, I'm in, I'm in the motion to say what she said.
Okay, I have a motion by Don and a second by Westbrook. Are there any other questions? Any more questions? Call question, all are triggered. Opposed? So we have one, two, three, four, five, yes, and then vote. I was saying that this process, we really looked at that case with, from the overview there, we're going to deal with the developer, Mr. Bruce and Mr. Bruce. We had a lesson, the modification of the apartment complex on the list before we got to this point was a, a new process. So thank you to Mr. Bruce. Thanks for being here for doing that. So we knew they were going to get here today, we were able to really mark the issues much quicker and already take them off clearly. So thank you all very much. At this time, y'all are welcome to stay for the night, but we'll take the time and we'll make sure that we're here and happy. This is a very exciting time that we get to see this way and even a new council member. It's very exciting, not only for the family, but for the community as well. So thank you all very much for being here today. I know that our family appreciates it so much, not only your support, but your being here today. So at this time, we will canvass the votes first. Is that what I'm doing?
Yes, sir.
Oh, hi, Felicity.
Hi, how are you?
Go ahead.
Okay. The city council is required by law, section 67.003 of the Texas election code, to canvass the returns and declare results of the city council runoff election to elect a city council member for single member district number three, held June 29, 2019, and to adopt an ordinance declaring the results. And as a result, appearing, excuse me, appearing as a result of such canvassing that the following named persons receive the following number of votes for the city council member district number three. Shirley McKeller, 203 votes. Pamela Phoenix, 173 votes. And it further apparent for such, from such canvass that Shirley McKeller received the highest number of votes cast for city council member district three. And now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Tyler, Texas, that Shirley McKeller be and is hereby declared elected city council member for district number three to serve for a two-year term of office. So that is the results at this time. So with the.
So I want to make a motion, make to approve one.
Second.
Motion by Don.
Sure.
All of the opponents, the odds have it. At this time, we will request Ms. McKeller and family to come up for the swearing-in. I believe we have a guest today, Councilman Senator Lee for Kinnedale, that is going to do the oath of office. And we'll let you all do it, make sure you're ready for him and everything. And then after that, we'll all come down and do pictures with you. So then we've got plenty of time for y'all to have pictures. And I think we had, I think we had enough room to pass for all the swearing-in folks sisters to come in.
All right. Dr. McKeller, raise your hand. Put your hand on the Bible. I just want to say it's an honor for me to do this today. I've been knowing you for a while, and you're a great woman, and so I'm so proud of this moment. In the name and by the authority, repeat after me, in the name and by the authority.
In the name and by the authority.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
I state your name.
I, Shirley McKeller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
City of Tyler, city council member.
City of Tyler, city council member.
For district three.
For district three.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitution and laws.
The constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States and this state, and so help me God.
And in this state, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go ahead and get back on, on track on our agenda. Let Ed have just a minute with the new councilwoman. Okay, here we go. We'll start on R1. It says agenda item R2 on my computer.
There's no presentation for R1.
No presentation for R1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Again, it's good to be here with you today. In the month of June, you approved the Western Seal Manhole Remedial Package for the consent decree. Today, according to the Code of Federal Regulations, Title 26, which is the internal revenue and section 1.150-2 that addresses the proceeds for funds used for reimbursement. We're asking you to consider this resolution along with the work that is tied to it. And Mr. Newhouse will provide further details.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This is, again, just to reiterate what Dr. Johnson said, we approved the Western Seal remediation package last council meeting. And this is simply a resolution that allows us to reimburse the funds that we will begin to pay invoices with future, with bonds and issues of future debt. So that's simply the purpose of this. This, this could have been part of the approval process last time, but I wouldn't look at it.
Got you. So it's just a point of clarification on this item. Any questions?
Need to approve R1.
Question by Westbrook.
Second.
Second by Sutter. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The odds have it. R2.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss with you Tyler Water Utilities' next steps in the consent decree process. As you know, the city of Tyler consent decree outlines compliance requirements. Those compliance requirements are the CMOM, the hydraulic model, the hydraulic capacity assessment and remedial measures. Number four, particularly, conditions assessments and remedial measures. Number five is lift stations and evaluation of capacity and improvements. Number six is force main assessments and remedial measures. And finally, number seven is to the elimination of construction SSO locations. On page 41 through 48 of the city of Tyler's consent decree, the city of Tyler is required to conduct assessments of gravity sewer lines and perform remedial measures, as well as force mains and force main assessments. as force mains and force main assessments and remedial measures there. Let me just say, the remedial measures program is part of the construction. So, in Appendix G, the Capacity Assessment and Remediation Program, it's outlined that this request is in conjunction and in compliance with implementing capacity remedial measures. And Mr. Newhouse will provide the details on this particular advancement in consent decree.
All right. Well, excuse me, as promised, last meeting, we would be coming with the proposal here to proceed with the work, and this is some work on gravity mainlines, the cured-in-place package. Again, we're continuing the work on Phase One, and these slides were presented last time, but just to run through real quickly, you can see that we had those manholes, 897, they were broken up into four packages. We've addressed the first package, the Western Seal, that has been awarded, contract is in route, in processing right now. And the Eastern Seal, we're going to have a pre-bid meeting next week, we're going to open bids on the 23rd, and the other two packages on manholes are coming. We are addressing here on gravity mains, the first package, this cured-in-place package, and we've got additional packages coming after this one. This one was, we used the Bible to solicit three proposals, and the work, basically, the secured-in-place work is lining a pipe. So, we're not digging up a pipe, we're not replacing a pipe, we're just lining the pipe that needs, that has issues. So, we're going to end up with basically a pipe inside of a pipe, it will be structural, so we don't have to worry about the total deterioration of the external pipe or the existing pipe. So, whatever needs to be done inside that pipe, removing roots, removing rust, which is tuberculation, we'll be installing a few manholes in some of this work, because currently we've got some runs that are a little too long for current regulations, so we're going to be installing some additional manholes. Obviously, there'll be a lot of cleaning involved, some TV inspection to do this work, and when they're done, they'll reconnect the services, and this is really a very minimally intrusive type work, so it should be very, very smooth. Dr. Johnson mentioned the capacity, and just to reinforce, if we've got capacity issues, we'd hate to go do some work on something and find out we have to change the size later. None of these lines are having the potential for that, so we look good that way. So, just a point of clarification. So, 5,787 million feet will be addressed in this phase. We're looking at Phase One, was done in basing, investigation of gravity mains, we're done in basins eight and 15, so you can see the brownish, maroonish-looking sections there, and those are going to be working in this phase. So, with that, I'm going to jump right into what our recommendations are, or I guess first, the three proposals we received were from Vortex Services and City Form Technologies. Oh, I have a little typo there. That came from Granite Enline, and not excellent references, so I apologize for that, but those dollars are correct, the three bids there, and the differences from the Vortex, the bottom line there. And our recommendation is that we proceed with Vortex Services. Again, we've got good references, we've got an experienced outfit that proves that we feel that can do the work, and they were also the little bit on this, or had the lowest price on this proposal.
And in the original, in the original thought process on this, what was the price that was expected?
The original price that was expected was approximately $380,000, and that was, I don't have my notes here for that, but that is, that was pipeline analysis, original estimate, was in that neighborhood, it was less than $400,000, I believe it was in the 380s, and that was just the construction cost, and that's what we're talking about here.
Good, so they're coming in a little bit lower.
We are, these first two packages, we've been very happy with the way the numbers are shaping up.
Good.
I'm glad.
Okay, any further questions?
Need to approve R2.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook and a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. At this time, I'm going to abstain from R3, and Councilman, Mayor Proton, Westbrook will run this.
Good morning. Morning, Mayor and Council. This morning, I'm presenting to you all an application for the Build Grant. As you might recall, last year, the City of Tyler made application for this grant, and it's really, Build is for Better Utilizing Investment to Leverage Development, and it's for our continued opportunity to invest in the redevelopment of downtown. So, what we're presenting today is just a resolution for the city to actually approve the moving forward of the process with the grant, as well as the city manager to authorize signature for the grant. This is, as I mentioned, a package that we presented last year, the city's match would be 1.2 million, the request is an 80/20, 80 percent, which is over 6 million, we come from USDOT, so the Department of Transportation. We had a conference call with them in talking about our grant last year, and we were unsuccessful in that grant. We came pretty close, all things considered, but there has been a major change to the legislation that last year we were considered an urban grant, this year we will be considered rural, and rural is given priority in the grant process. The other thing I'll mention in meeting with DOT is by creating partnerships as part of this process, it does help us leverage the dollars better and be more competitive with the grant process, so we're working in partnership with the county on this application. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Fitzpatrick has been a tremendous asset in this process, they have done the lion's share of the application this year, and reorganizing of the application at no cost to the city, so it's been a huge benefit for us to work with them and their expertise to move this grant forward this year. So, again, we're just asking for the council to approve the resolution of support and authorize the city manager to sign the grant.
Thank you, Stephanie. I do have one card. Sharon Guthrie, would you like to step up to the microphone? If you would, please state your name and address.
My name is Sharon Guthrie. I live at 6808 Glen Eagles Drive in Tyler. And I just recently read about this project, and it very much surprised me because, number one, the amount of the money, from what I understand, the grant would be in close to $20 million, with another five to six million put in by the city and the county. One of the reasons for requesting the grant was traffic congestion in Tyler, and so, from what I read, you would be taking from front to errand from four lanes down to two-lane road, and putting in islands with bicycle lanes. How that would help traffic, relieve traffic congestion, is, I don't see how a rational person can think that that would be helpful. My concern is, why would we do that to downtown Tyler? Then, you're wanting to encourage people to come downtown, not discourage. And we've put in a lot of, the city has put in a lot of these, I call them islands, that need to be maintained, that, in my opinion, creates more work for city maintenance, and from what I see down Grande, as well as other places, they're often not maintained, and they just look unkept. And so, they're not a beautification, in my opinion. I mean, unless you see them as soon as it's been recently made, they don't look good. And so, I don't understand the traffic problem, congesting it, or condensing it down to two lanes, I don't understand putting in islands, and I don't understand wanting to use our taxpayer dollars to do this. So, I am very much opposed to this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, would you mind, a point of clarification on the breakout of the funds, please?
Sure. So, it is an 80/20 grant, so the city's match is only 1.25 million. 1.25 million would be our match. That would be what we would have to contribute. The 80 percent comes from the federal government, the 20 percent comes from the city. The county is contributing a certain portion to certain projects that they're looking at for downtown as well, to help leverage their investment dollars. The other thing that I'll say from a planning perspective for downtowns, is that in a downtown area, you want to create an environment that is safe for pedestrians, because you want them to park in our parking garages and access everything downtown via walking, or, you know, riding a bike downtown, so that traffic congestion, it creates a situation where it's not safe for the pedestrian. So, the primary focus of this grant, at least from the gateway corridor of Broadway, from Front Street down to the square proper, is to really enhance the environment for the pedestrian. It's very different from the rest of our city, in that we want to move cars in and out of retail areas and other areas of our city. So, from a planning perspective, that's what we're trying to do with this grant. It's not only to be safe for pedestrian access, but to also ensure that we provide, you know, a better corridor, prettier corridor, it will still be a four-lane roadway, it will just be narrowed, so that the traffic does slow down to protect people that are moving from businesses throughout the downtown area on foot.
But to address what Ms. Guthrie's saying, and I've, because I've received a few calls on this as well.
Right.
Just because you, when you reduce Broadway to one lane each way, and you've got the Center Island, and you've got Black Trail and all this, but that's not, there is, there are avenues to move traffic, whether you make Spring, one way going north, College, one way going south, another street maybe going straight to Palace, there's going to be a rerouting, it's not just, you're not going to all of a sudden put all these same cars.
And ideally, what you want to do, Councilman Warren, is spread that traffic out to the major arterios that move around downtown, which includes Beckham, you didn't, you know, you didn't mention that one, but Beckham is one, Front Street, and then going north, Palace, and, you know, up to Gentry, are major corridors and major collectors that should be utilized to go around downtown if you're not conducting business in downtown. And so, as part of the revitalization plan, we're going to be looking at alternatives for one-way streets, and how that works, and what else we need to be doing to move traffic better in and around downtown.
Did you say there's still be four lanes of traffic?
Yes, there's still, they're only reducing the lane width, they're not taking away lanes.
And her point about the low maintenance, or the streetscaping and the importance of low maintenance, we firmly believe in as well. In fact, she mentioned Grande, and that's something we're already looking at, some possibilities of what can we do to change some of the medians there in order to reduce the amount of maintenance that's required. So, it's, the point she made on that one is well-stated, and I think it's something that we often take consideration of, even when we did West Cumberland, for example. You'll see a different type of landscaping, a different type of streetscaping that went into the West Cumberland medians, just because we look for those opportunities to reduce those costs for future maintenance on those type of projects.
Mrs. Guthrie mentioned 20 million. Where did that figure come from?
Well, there is a total application cost in partnership with the county, but our portion is only the 1.25 that we would contribute to the grant application.
Any further questions, Stephanie or Miss Guthrie?
Well, I just want to make one other comment.
Sure.
And, because I hear Ms. Guthrie, if you go to the Bishop Arts District over South Dallas, it's a fabulous area, and this wasn't a guy that just came in with his own money and said, "I'm going to make this neighborhood better." He applied for grants, and got these grants, and totally transformed that area into vibrant downtown. And I'm a firm believer that every good community, wherever you, if you travel to any big city, every one of those big cities has a fabulous downtown. And so, if this is what it takes to not jumpstart, but to continue with what we're doing downtown, I'm all for it. So, with that being said, I move to approve R3.
Second. Thank you. I've got a motion by Warren and a second by Sutter. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stephanie.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council.
Hold on just a second. Let's get the mayor back.
Oh, sorry.
Just one second.
So, on to M1.
M1, yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
The Environmental Protection Agency requires all small and medium-sized municipalities to apply for a discharge permit for their stormwater system. Agenda Items M1 and M2 address issues regarding the renewal for the City of Tyler's permit. These items are related, but will require separate votes. Paul Newhouse is going to come and make the presentation.
Good morning, again. This first item focuses on the renewal of the city's Stormwater Management Plan, and the, well, I guess, the resubmital of an updated plan, and the renewal of our MS4 permit. So, the MS4 is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So, that is how we manage our stormwater, and we have to apply for a permit that allows us to discharge our stormwater, and of course, to do that, there are some things that we need to do as a municipality. We have to do, there are seven minimum control measures, five of which are required for all of these municipalities, these five are here. We've got to have a public education outreach and involvement section, we've got to speak to illicit discharge detection and elimination, we've got to manage construction site stormwater runoff, we've got to manage post-construction stormwater management, and we've got to have pollution prevention and good housekeeping for our facilities. So, we've got to be good stewards of what we got and keep it clean. So, we've got these minimum control measures, and within the permit, some of which has been kind of summarized in the communication, we've got best management practices that we put in place and that we monitor and do that help us, that tell the state how we're going to manage these and implement these minimum control measures. So, beyond these first five, there's an option, there's a mandatory for Level Four, that is, which we are not a Level Four, we are a Level Three, and that is to identify and control pollutants, in our case, it'd be from our landfill. So, we're not there yet, this will be coming when we are officially over 100,000. And then, there's an optional seventh minimum control measure, which is to authorize construction activities where we, the city, is the operator. So, when we implement this one, again, it's optional, we've implemented this one so that we don't have to apply for a construction general permit every time we have a small construction activity. So, that's why we chose, actually, the last time the permit was submitted in '14, we didn't do this, this came a little bit later, so we've just decided to continue that, this go around. So, the next portion, or part of this, that is our second, next thing aside, is this interlocal agreement, and I don't have a presentation for it, I just wanted to mention that that is part of our stormwater plan, is the agreement to work with Smith County. We've just agreed to work with them when they need our help, and if we need their help in certain things, then we speak to them. An example is literature. We put together some literature that speaks to different stormwater issues. Whenever they need some of that literature, they make a request, we print it, we submit them and invoice, they pay us back. Something straightforward and simple like that. There's a few other things. This agreement doesn't really obligate us in any strong way to do anything or commit funds, it just says that we will talk whenever we have a need. For instance, if they have illicit discharge, they may need our help in chasing that down. They'll talk to us, we'll figure out what it's going to cost, we'll do what we can to help them out and sort it out, and then we'll submit an invoice, and they will reimburse us. So, that's what that component is. And our recommendation, of course, is that we renew our permit, and we authorize the city manager to sign that, and we also resubmit and renew our stormwater management program. So, that's all.
Very detailed. Any questions? I have a motion to be, a second by Sellers. Any other questions? Did you have one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have, that's M1 and M2.
Well, the motion was on M1, but you still need another.
Okay, so we need a motion on that as well.
Need to approve M2.
Second.
Motion by Sellers, a second by Sutter. Any other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Very good. M4, where?
M3 has been pulled.
M3 has been pulled.
For review of that bid, and so, M4, yes, sir. Item M4 before you has to do with a sidewalk project at TJ Austin Elementary School. This is a project that is being funded by the Community Development Block Program, or CDBG. The intent of this particular item is to award the construction contract for the installation of sidewalks on Moore Avenue between Field Street and Harmony Street, and then also on Palace Avenue from Queen Street to Franklin Street, in order to allow pedestrian access more easily to that school. We did have a design prepared by Elige Engineering, and we did advertise the project for bids. Bids were received on Tuesday, June the 11th, and we received six bids for construction. You can see that Texas Specialized Construction Services was the low bidder on this project. However, they were not able to meet the bonding requirements that are clearly spelled out in the construction contract. In addition, they had multiple discrepancies and inadequacies within their bid. Therefore, they were disqualified from this process, and we have moved to the second low bidder, who is CE Marler and Associates. Therefore, we are recommending that you award the construction contract to CE Marler and Associates for the base bid amount of $330,889.75.
Great. So, Shirley, just to give you some history on this, you may or may not know, I think you probably do, but Ed Moore and I were approached by an elementary school class, where they made this request, the council member, to get some more sidewalks to their school. And so, this is a project that we have worked on for well years to get to the point that we're able to bid this. This is a great project for Austin Elementary School. Absolutely. And with, any other questions, or entertain the motion? Shirley, you want to make a motion on that?
I make a motion that we accept the proposal and the bid for the sidewalks.
Great. So, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Sutter, with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Great project. Thank you, Lisa.
The next item, this is in 4, this has to do with the Cambridge Road project. If you'll recall, this is a widening project that's going on from Cambridge Road between Broadway up to Jeff Davis. The intent of the project is to widen the lanes, to add curb and gutter, and also to add sidewalk to this section of the roadway. In addition, we'll be addressing some safety issues that are occurring at that 90-degree curve right before it turns north. The design is about 90% complete. Currently, we have a consultant, Dixon Services, who is out working with these property owners to acquire the needed easements and/or right-of-way that we're going to need in order to be able to construct this project. Dixon has been able so far to acquire 24 out of the 56 easements that we need for the project, which of course, still leaves 32 that we still, he is still working on. But in the meantime, he has paid for those 24 easements in the amount of $69,377.82. Staff has reimbursed those costs to him, and we are asking Council to ratify that staff action in those reimbursements.
So, do you have any people that just say no?
So far, we haven't had anyone just outright say no. There are some people that, there are two property owners in particular who have not been very open to the idea of easements, and we may end up, at least on one of those property owners, requiring, going through the condemnation process on that. The other property owner wasn't real excited about the project, but their property was also for sale, and so, Mr. Dixon purposely chose not to do any negotiations with that property owner. He's now going to be dealing with the new owners. They closed, I believe, two weeks ago.
Now, these are, this is not, this is just laying off the front of their properties. It's not going to look.
Correct. The map is a little misleading. The colors really only indicate the properties, the yellow are the properties that we have acquired the easements, the pink properties are properties, goodness, I've already forgotten what the pink means.
We probably.
The pink means that the easements are not needed on those properties. The little blue strips are where we actually need to acquire full additional right-of-way. And so, the colors don't mean that we're taking the entire property. We are really only taking small strips, usually between 10 and 15 feet along the front property lines of each of the properties.
And a lot of that is already bargained. Much of that is already bargained.
Correct, correct.
Right. So, this will be a great improvement for that neighborhood.
It will be. It'll improve vehicle access, but it's also going to improve the pedestrian access with the installation of those sidewalks.
Absolutely. Okay, so, any other questions of Lisa on M5?
I make a motion to approve. A second.
Motion by Chris, a second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Room 6.
Okay. If you'll recall, the city has been in the process of performing a series of drainage studies in particular neighborhoods around the city. Four of those six drainage studies have been completed, and at this point, we're ready to move forward with the design and construction of the recommended improvements in the Cloverdale drainage area in particular. This is an area that extends between Woodlark Drive and Caperton Boulevard. This is just off of the old Jacksonville Highway area. This entire drainage system is either severely undersized or failing in some way, and the recommendation from the drainage study is that the entire system be either completely replaced or repaired where that's possible. So, we are presenting today an engineering contract with Benchmark Design Group. They are the firm that did the drainage study, so this would be just the next step for them to go into the design of the project. This particular contract is going to provide for the full range of engineering and design services that's going to be required, to include the topographic survey throughout the entire project area, all of the engineering design work, preparations and plans, but it also includes bidding this project when we get to that point, bidding it for construction, and then also construction inspection during that construction period. We're anticipating that the design is going to last around 35 weeks. There'll be probably six to eight weeks for bidding and award of the construction contract, and then the construction is expected to last about 36 weeks.
And I guess, for Shirley's benefit also, the M4 that we just threaded on is coming from the CDBG funds. M5 and M6 will be coming from the half-cent sales tax fund, in our projects that we have been working on for many years.
That's correct.
So, could you tell us projected finished date on the Cloverdale project?
Yes, ma'am. We're hoping to be able to get the design kicked off at the beginning of August. Obviously, it's going to depend on how long we, it takes to get the engineering contract signed and approved and executed, but we anticipate the design will run from August of this year through about May of 2020. And then, like I said, there'll be, you know, four to eight weeks, I'm sorry, not four, six to eight weeks for bidding and the construction contract award, and then after that, we're anticipating that construction will last from around September of 2020 through May of 2021.
And we do have a call from Brian Hodges relating to this item. Come on in. State your name and address. For the record, please, sir.
So, that's Brian Hodges, over at 3901 Silverwood Drive. And I'm here to, I just want to clarify kind of the severity of the problem with the drainage going on, and how it's affecting our property and a lot of the properties around us. And so, basically, what's happening is what I believe, after some researches, when our neighborhood was developed, there was a creek in the area that was put below ground. And the infrastructure that went into that is now failing, and now we have very large sinkholes appearing all over the neighborhood. And this has created a very serious safety issue, especially on our property, because we have sinkholes in our backyard, we have young children who have fallen into the sinkholes. The city's been on our property multiple times to fill them in, but it's always just kind of a very temporary measure. I think the first, the first visible sinkhole on our property formed in March, and since then, excuse me, the city's been out there four times to fill it in. And so, I just kind of wanted to make you guys aware of how it's affecting everything. We moved to Tyler two years ago and bought this house, and since then, the value of our house has gone down significantly each year. And it's not really kind of what we expected. I think it's affecting not only us, like I said, but everyone on our street, on Silverdale, as well as Cloverdale. Because how it works is there's an alley between our two streets, and the alley, I think, was intended to be a bit of a right-of-way where the creek was buried, but ultimately, it comes underneath our properties as well. And so, I'm very much in favor of approving this, and I hope that you guys do, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for coming today. Are there any other questions of Lisa?
Move to approve M6.
A second.
Motion by Sellers, second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Russ.
This request that City Council consider authorizing the city manager to sign an architectural and design agreement from CT Branding Corporation for the amount not to exceed $62,900 to develop architectural and engineering plans for Front Forest Park Pool, and Splash Pad Repurpose Project, and Wilder Park Splash Pad Repurpose Project. This includes an amount not to exceed $14,000 for the finalization of construction and administration of both the parks whose construction was already approved under Bid 19019. Further request, the City Council also rescind funding authorized for buyboard vendor Warwick's Design Incorporated in the amount of $850,991. Give you a little history of where we are today. This is a almost memorized plan that we've had before you a few times, but our construction history on this project, both Wilder and Front Forest, we had, November 2018, our first bids went out, we didn't receive any bids. We put it back out to bid again in December, we only received one bid. The overall project, including the aquatics, was a $2.4 million over budget. And April 2019, we approved $851,000 for this buyboard vendor that I am asking to rescind from. Purpose of that brings us to July, where I had to cancel with them because they could not get them to bring me a contract. And we were under a CIP contract purpose so that we can hold them accountable. We were extending, even without having a contract, no dates of start, no penalization, and so, it just really was becoming a problem of continuation with that company. They were a reputable company, but for some reason, I believe, they underbid what they were putting together because there were contingency funds in the, both those splashpads that they were more or less using as a splash, or a slush fund. And so, we, picking up on those things and the fact that I could not get a contract, just, it was time to walk away. There were some splash pad designs that were far greater than what we had at both parks, and that was of interest, that we wanted to improve, and we just, really, that side of it doesn't want, we don't want to change that as we move forward, so. The designs will continue to be looked at.
That was interesting.
It was.
I don't get that.
Wilder, we would, we don't see a design change at all, other than maybe some of the aquatic features from this other presentation of another company coming in the near future. Going to move to Front Forest, the ADA construction portion, just giving some reminder of where we are with both these projects and some of the history. Front Forest, it was almost $500,000 just to do the ADA. I'm just bringing that back up because that's a large chunk of the money to go in. It's a multi-tier location, and so, there had to be ADA access, and the bathrooms had to be updated, and bring all that to code. And it's well worth the visit if you go out to visit the site, even though we have an empty pool right now, unfortunately. We do have that issue that we're dealing with with the pool, that we had to close down. I wanted to give you some numbers, the doubts of usage, there is a significant number on both Front Forest pools. Wilder, we have a history of problems back in '14, where we had half the summer was closed down because of vandalism. 2015, about, almost 1,000 users were coming from, the count would be coming from the Glass Recreation Center. And of course, because of mechanical and problems, the pool did close there and 2016 on. 2016, I could not find the records of what the actual numbers were. And then, we get to 2018, we did see a significant drop in usage at Front Forest, although the last three weeks, I cannot confirm those numbers, so we went with an estimate of what the last year's three weeks were worth, and just kind of went with that number. There was just a little bit of record retention issues there. The sad part I wanted to look at is, this has to be brought forward, even though we went to TISD, and I'm very grateful that TISD worked with us, that was out of 11th hour of trying to get through problems. And to date, as of yesterday, we've only had 606 users, so that is a depressing situation, and one that we wanted. The original plan was to get the splashpads built, which, had we, had we had a bid in the December timeframe, and even in the January presentation, had we had the bids in, we would already have splashpads, we would be open, we've had, but we've had some, even some construction delays because of the rain. That's been everywhere. Bring back Wilder real quickly, some of the things that we worked with Council of that district, with Councilman Warren, we went through the whole park. The bottom right-hand corner is the location of where the new splashpad, and we'll continue to go there, that seems to be the best place in conjunction with our Glass Recreation Center. One of the reasons we wanted to put it there is the summer kids program, so they could use it, it's more easier for staff, especially with staff situations from time to time, so we looked at that being one of the better locations. And I don't have any zoom-ins, but that would be just an approximate. One of the things that we've done, there's a few things that I really wanted to bring up on Wilder Park, is just more of even an update, too. Wilder had an old baseball field, then there was a football field, and the desire was to work with Texas College, and working with them, I don't have an MOU yet, but we are still taking it back to a, to a baseball field, and staff has been doing the work. We've saved considerable amount of money by just us doing the field and redoing the work over a period of time. And that process is to, where they will give us two camps a year with our kids, and to where we will have camps, baseball camps, because one of the things that is happening in Tyler, we're seeing some usages go down in some of our fields, because we're not, baseball is, seems to be falling, in our, at least in our area, and we are seeing some numbers in others, other parts of the country. One aspect is, is moving on to, with Wilder, just to give you the aspect of what's going to happen, I love this park and the aspect of what it is for our children and our young adults. Two baseball camps, which is just part of the conversation with. Two, but, two baseball camps, which is just part of the conversation with, uh, Texas College. Uh, Glass Recreation, very strong summer kids program. It also branches out into three different parks throughout the city to, where we're feeding the kids. Uh, then we, this boat ground with, uh, Tyler First Tee Golf Program. Uh, that is another program that's geared for our children. And then the enhanced splashpad to have more of a draw and, and a more functional, and one, I want to go use this splashpad versus the old one that was there. And so, those, those four items, uh, along with a few other things that's still in the work, is, to me, is what's exciting about Wilder Park and allowing that thing, uh, to come together. And it's just disappointing, uh, from, uh, things that are out of control, but to not have, uh, the splashpad nor the pool at Fun Forest. Uh, Glass Recreation, we've done quite a few things there with equipment, uh, additions, adding the parking lot. So, throughout the years, we've, uh, well over, uh, six hundred thousand dollars in equipment and, uh, things that have gone into that park since about two thousand and fifteen. And, uh, do have a, I back up with that, part of that's the annual operas, operation budget, which that's not one of our largest budgets in the park program is there at the Glass Recreation Center. Moving forward, this is where I do have, uh, Terry Brandon in the room for questions and plus to kind of give you an eye, input of what's, what we've been seeing and some of the issues. Uh, we don't see a change in the design of the splashpad. And, uh, and that, uh, at, uh, we, we, we say that for Wilder. And, uh, that, that one is, uh, one we're still excited about that one happening. It's just unfortunate. If they were to start today, it would take three months to get it completed. So, it tells you where we are behind the curve because of delays, issues in it, uh, in that, in that regard. Uh, the pool design, uh, we are looking at, uh, through the unfortunate events of not getting the splashpad built like we wanted, it is actually looking as a savings, uh, to the program in the sense of, before, if you looked at the bottom left-hand corner with a little bit of purple, uh, that's not the size of it, that's, uh, an old structure there. But, uh, the splashpad was actually going to be proposed, was to be down there in that bottom section. That way, the pool would be in function, splashpad would already been in construction, so we would have the, uh, that part of it. With the pool, with the, the pool not opening and the, the splashpad not getting where it needed to be, putting it up on the top level with the pool, because we don't need the same, we've analyzed the, the pool operations. Uh, Olympic-sized pool, and probably seventy-five percent of it, uh, is not used, used a lot. Let me back up. It's probably about fifty percent, you might say, because at the halfway line, uh, of the pool going into the deep, which is twelve, uh, foot deep, we lose ninety-five percent of the people, probably, that don't go into the deep end because of lack of, uh, uh, swimming ability, maybe, or you have to be certified in order to go in that by our staff. So, there's things that we do make place. We don't want somebody out there that's, uh, going to be in unsafe, uh, environment. And, um, so, uh, we do have swimming classes, those type of things. So, we want it, we always are trying to encourage that to, to happen. But the pool, uh, if you think about it, the concrete that was going to be spent down at the lower level, we still had to bring concrete at the top level. Now, with the splashpad moving to the top level, we're not duplicating concrete cost in that, in that sense, if that makes sense. And so, the splashpad, uh, will, uh, be where the children that are younger will not be intimidated by going by the pool first. They would be able to go to the splashpad. And there's actually going to be splashpad features in this pool where you look at the lower-left portion, that kind of that little hook, and this is a preliminary design, it's not a final design, there could be some changes. But that is a beach entry, which it, it helps us with our ADA access. And so, that's been the topic from the get-go, that we have a beach access style for ADA purposes. We do have ADA, uh, users, and so, we want to make sure we accommodate that. Um, the, some of that is, there's, uh, and it's not something we have to do, but it's, it's a personal approach to, of, uh, how you want to approach it. For an individual that would have to get out of their wheelchair, currently, you would have to get out of your wheelchair, get into a hoist device and be lowered into the pool. So, there is some embarrassment issues that could come into play, not taking that as a fact, haven't heard that, but that's something that's been, uh, a common knowledge of, uh, that why I don't swim. And this beach entry would allow a waterproof-style, uh, wheelchair accessibility, or even a walker. Uh, the, if, so it's, it's another inclusive, uh, park in a sense that we've, we're trying to move in that direction. So, with the beach entry, there's still lanes, uh, for swimming. There are some water features that are, uh, in the pool itself. And so, it does enhance our current pool. Again, the whole design was to, uh, come in and bring in something that's, that is more user-friendly, more funner for the, uh, kids to use, less intimidation. We, we are even looking at, if the funds were to be available, to add small slides that are not expensive, that, uh, more, you know, to where there is a slide operation, uh, and then, uh, and go from there. The, uh, total aspect of this pool has been, uh, it's been through some rocky, uh, situations with, uh, the age. It's eighty-one years old. Our last, uh, eighty-six, and I'm going to bring, he's already worked his way up, I felt his presence. Uh, and he can give you more insight on that. But, uh, nineteen eighty-six, we're already looking at how old this pool is. Uh, the, we've all inherited something that's lasted, uh, a few generations. And, uh, the original cost of this, uh, we, we believe in, in talking to Mr. Brandon, would be, uh, back in thirty-six was about a hundred thousand dollars. And so, that's equivalent to probably three-plus million dollars right now, if we went with the same, uh, product. Uh, the idea of this pool, uh, lessening the, the footprint, it's over six hundred thousand gallons of water. Uh, there is electrical use, there is a chemical use, uh, there is a staffing issue. Uh, we are struggling, even this year, we struggle with getting, uh, lifeguards. And so, this actually, um, a smaller pool, but more functional and more usable. We do have a capacity, we can, uh, that we, uh, have, have a mandate on the building, that we can only have so many in the, uh, in the pool area, even including the building. So, there's a capacity issue that we are dealing with. And, uh, and I'd have to go back and look, but I'm thinking it's around three eighty-six. And that's a number that we normally average on, uh, you know, three fifty to, uh, average, uh, per day when it's on a heavier use, uh, function. I'm going to, again, let, uh, Mr. Brandon come up and, and, because y'all probably have some questions, and I'm here for questions for you, too.
Okay, Mr. Brandon, come on up, uh, state your name and your address. And for the benefit of, of some, uh, tell us when you were, the years you were city engineer and, um, uh, for the city of Tyler and your past involvement on these projects.
My name is Terry Brandon, and, uh, I office at thirteen twenty-one South Broadway, the Brandon Corporation. I founded in nineteen seventy-seven. Before nineteen seventy-seven, I worked for the city of Tyler as the city engineering department across the street, across the hall out there. And, uh, at that time, uh, I worked with Rocky Arnold. I don't know if anybody ever heard of Rocky Arnold, he was the director of public works in charge of sanitation.
I sure remember.
P and Z building inspection, landfill, the garage, maintenance, warehouse engineering surveying. All those things were under Rocky at that time. So, I've been here a long time, and, uh, I welcomed this opportunity. I want to say that first of all, my wife and I both welcomed the opportunity to work close to home because I, I work overseas and I work in twenty-three other states. And it, it really would be nice to be able to work at Tyler for a while. Uh, this project was, this, this pool was built in nineteen thirty-seven as a WPA project, and it was a, an Olympic qualifying site, actually. And, uh, it served its purpose, and it did cost about a hundred thousand to do the building and the pool and the grounds. Um, it has seen better days. And you're aware that we weren't able to open the pool this year. Well, part of the reason was because we started pumping water into the pool, and the cast iron pipes that date from nineteen thirty-seven failed, and we started pumping muddy water into the pool. So, we fixed that problem, and now the main drains are leaking. And the main drains are also cast iron, and they're also eighty-something years old. So, the pipe is seeing, the, the, the pipe has deteriorated, it's all under the shell. The pool isn't really that jaded. We feel like by putting the splashpad and the pool in the same, inside the present footprint, and then rebuilding the decks, we can have a almost new appearance in that, in that rectangle there. Uh, and, and yet accommodate more people than are using the pool today. Uh, we would probably combine use would be somewhere close to, uh, five fifty, uh, a day, counting the splashpad, the pool, and the deck areas. The bathhouse is now back up to almost what it was new. We've got new, new walls and new petitions, uh, new benches, new, uh, new lavatories, new, uh, toilets, everything inside the bathhouse, and all the ramps now make it ADA accessible. So, it's, that part is done. So, this expenditure going forward, uh, if we can get the design going on this, I think we could get construction started as early as maybe, uh, August, September on the splashpad at Wilder, which would be our first target. And then have this pool done in, um, ninety to a hundred and twenty days, um, uh, before all the pool buil, pool builders get real busy. You notice we didn't have any bids back last year. We waited too long to get the bids. Um, there were not but about four or five qualified builders of this kind of pool in the state. And so, you have to get on their, their dance card. And we waited too long, and all the builders got busy, and there wasn't anybody interested in coming to Tyler. So, that was the problem. This year, we, we are like first on the dance card. So, we have, uh, already discussed this project with builders, and, uh, we think we'll move forward with this. So, if you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer.
Good, thank you very much for the, for the history. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you. First, I, I want to commend Russ and the, um, Parks and Recreation for this great work that they're doing, uh, for Wilder Park and Fun Forest. Couple of things that I do, uh, have in mind is, you mentioned security, and I'm sure that, that's all taken care of. But I think about the, the young students that live north of Gentry Parkway, and they want to learn to swim. Do we have something in place that we can get them across Gentry Parkway without having to walk across Gentry Parkway? Many of the parents are working during the course of the day and cannot carry the children over to Fun Forest.
Yes, ma'am, and it's a good question, and it's, uh, the, and it helps being over transit, too. But, uh, we, we do have transit operations that, it's free. Um, I, I correct, I'd have to look for the number, but I think it's eighteen and the under. They do have to have an adult if they're less than, I think, fourteen, at least with them, someone to, to chaperone them on the bus. But it is free. And, uh, and it has been utilized, but, uh, as I asked that question yesterday for T I S D, uh, the numbers are so low, and, uh, as far as staff could tell me, they don't even recognize the fact that a bus has, uh, brought kids there. But I, I'd have to ask transit if it's even being utilized. But, uh, to answer that question, uh, that is part of the current plan. It also goes with our library. We, we give free transportation, uh, to our kids to, to the library and, uh, those type of things. And they can go to, uh, the Faulkner Water Park that's currently open. They can go to the T I S D's swimming pool. Uh, they can go to Birdfield, uh, with the bus. But it, there, there is an inconvenience in the sense of, of walking in that sense. But, uh, the transportation is provided.
And the parents are aware that this is a very...
We, we do put it out, we put it on our web, we do put it out as a news release and, uh, and as reminders. But, uh, is, it's, it's a matter of what's, uh, convenient. And, uh, a lot of times, I think, has been some of the problems. It's probably just not as convenient.
Shirley, we can actually, uh, we can, um, uh, that's something we could actually use your help on. Once we get to the point that we're opening Fun Forest, to make sure that, uh, we get, you know, the proper, you know, notification to the kids, the parents from, that were, whatever location north of Gentry, to make sure they're making it over to, uh, Fun Forest.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, and to add to that, we have thought of, because working with T I S D on other things is, is giving something in the, because they give notices in the, to the kids. We thought about doing that, once we got the pool up and going, it just, this year was not a good time to do that. But, um, next year, with the new enhancements of the pool, uh, would be to put that information out to T I S D that they'd give a note, slip it into the, uh, to the children to give to the parents. Although, if they were like me, I never gave my parents notes, so...
Do you have another question, Shirley?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Any other question?
One, I'm sorry, I did have one other. You mentioned the, uh, baseball camp. Is that going to be held at the park or at Texas College?
It'll be there at the, uh, at the park.
Yes, okay.
I don't, I don't think we have the MOU finished.
No, sir, we don't.
At Texas College, but it's a project that we have, it's been a while we've been working with, with MOU.
They've been patient with me on it because it was a three, to do it, outsourced. I had three hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollar to build the park. We didn't have the funding for that. So, staff, uh, we've been doing all the work ourselves in time, and it's been since, uh, the fall or last year, we were working on it. We've been going this long with it, just working it in. And it's really coming to where it'll be ready by, uh, first of August, uh, or middle of August, somewhere in that timeframe. They, their season starts August twenty-fifth. Even if we didn't have the MOU together, they'll be utilizing it under the lease agreement. And, uh, but I, the relationship is there to get that camp going, because I really think. And we're doing that also with soccer, uh, with them. Uh, we've talked to even, uh, TJC also about softball. Uh, so, we're trying to grow those sports back, uh, into Tyler.
That'd be great. Shirley, um, would you like to make a motion for M seven?
I'd like to stand and make that motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the motion that you offered to us. Thank you.
So, we have, I, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, sellers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. M eight? Thank you all very much. Thank you, Terry.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Uh, M eight is a request that the City Council consider an approval, uh, of an interlocal agreement between the city of Tyler and Smith County Emergency Service District, also known as E S D two, uh, for fire and first responder services. We came to you on June the twelfth with a similar agreement with the city of White House. And, uh, this would be an agreement with the city, I'm sorry, E S D's, uh, Smith County Emergency Service District Number Two. Uh, this would be a one-year renewal and a five-year sunset. So, after five years, we'll take another look at it to, uh, make sure it's still a good agreement for both parties involved. So, it's recommended that the City Council approve the attaching interlocal agreement between the city of Tyler and Smith County Emergency Service District Number Two for fire and first responder services. Any questions?
No, I, and, and you had done a similar work on another, on the, at the last...
City of White House, on June twelfth.
Yeah, City of White House.
Yes, sir. There's one more to come with E S D one, which is the Lindell area.
Good, I appreciate all the effort that you're putting into that. Move to approve, M eight?
Second.
Uh, motion by, uh, Warren, the second by Westbrook, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Chief. M nine?
Mayor, Council, according to the U.S. climate data, the city of Tyler received several inches of rain. Uh, the average rainfall... I knew that was funny. The average rainfall for the month of January, uh, was three-point-nine-one, seventeen days of rain. February is three-point-three-four, sixteen days. March, uh, was four-point-two-seven, nineteen days. April was three-point-seven-eight, eighteen days. And May was four-point-six-four, twenty-two days. Uh, these rain events have caused erosion, overflows, and damage to property and infrastructure. It was during the month of April and May that we experienced heavy rains that caused a forty-two-inch main to erode the embankment in Blackfoot Creek, thereby creating an environmental and public health and safety hazard for the city of Tyler. Unfortunately, due to the location, uh, and the conditions of the area, Tyler Water Utilities was unable to address the needed repair. Um, and as outlined in the Texas Local Government Code, chapter two fifty-two, which allows Tyler Water Utilities to make emergency repairs that potentially pose property and infrastructure damage and a public health impact on its citizenry, uh, Tyler Water Utilities took immediate actions accordingly and consulted and evaluated the situation and authorized a contractor, uh, to, uh, get involved. My, Mr. Norris, uh, the manager of Water Treatment Systems, will provide you the details.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, what an introduction. Yeah, that's right. Uh, yes, Dr. Johnson-Mission, this is a forty-two-inch sewer main that, uh, runs across the sixteen-hundred block of, uh, West Northwest Loop Three Twenty-three, uh, there at the railroad tracks. And just right outside of the loop, about three hundred yards. And as you can see in the slide where I have circled in yellow, that sewer line, uh, runs right up against the bank of the creek. And due to the rains, uh, that were mentioned, the erosion eroded under that sewer line. And due to the rains, uh, that were mentioned, the erosion eroded under that sewer line and actually, uh, collapsed the sewer line. Um, and that sewer line delivers about, um, one-half of the water, uh, the sanitary sewer from the north side of Tyler to the west side of wastewater treatment plant. This is the actual picture, uh, right after we found the line, uh, that had collapsed, and as you can see, it's a very big line, forty-two inch, and a large amount of wastewater that it carries every day, approximately three million gallons a day, uh, to the plant. So, and we immediately called in, uh, a usual contractor to begin repairs on that line, and, uh, and then they did, they showed up and assessed, uh, the situation, and, uh, the, the decision was made, uh, by staff and the contractor to move that line away from the creek, so that this, uh, can be prevented from happening again in the near future. So what, uh, what we did was, uh, move the, uh, line away, added manholes, and replaced approximately six hundred feet of that sewer line, so that we could prevent erosion in the future. Um, so this is a, this is a ratification request, uh, for four hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Well, I'm glad you got right on it.
Yes.
That's a big deal.
Definitely.
Yeah, so thank you all for having the diligence to, yeah, I remember when it happened if it.
Yes.
That's, that was really bad.
They're, they're unforgettable events.
Yes, I, I will never forget that event, yes. So thank you all for getting on that immediately. Any questions, or I'd entertain a motion?
Move to approve, M nine?
Motion by Warren, and second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Now we're on to two board appointments. Cassandra, you're in.
Okay, uh, this is a Habsinck Sales Tax Board, request that the city council consider approving nominations to the job of Tyler, Habsinck Sales Tax Preparation Board for District Number Three and Six. And I'll lay with, uh, for, like, for Dr. Councilmember McKell for next time, District Six this time.
Okay, okay, and, 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 um, Shirley, just for a point of clarification on this as well, this is the only, uh, position that is by council district, and so the other, uh, appointments that we made just come from the entire community and are debated by us, but, uh, Habsinck Sales Tax is a direct appointment by the council member, someone from your district.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, all right, Councilman Suddeth?
Yes.
Do you have, uh, someone to nominate for your district?
I do, I nominate John Nix to represent District Six on the Habsinck Sales Tax Board.
Former council member, John Nix?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, that is in a form of a motion for your Habsinck Sales Tax nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. McGee. Uh, at this, uh, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, and now we are on to the consent agenda. Is that correct, or are there any items?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, and second by Suddeth. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, city managers report. I didn't forget this time.
You could have.
They put it big on the.
For the sake of time, I think the council probably would've been happy if you'd forgotten. Uh, but I'll, just a couple of items. So the police department held its quarterly church and community meeting on June twenty-eighth. Meeting was hosted at, by Saint Louis Baptist Church, and they did an outstanding job of arranging the meeting and feeding the attendees. There were possibly ninety people in attendance, including several who were attending the meeting for the first time. Let's hope to continue growing this community network that we have with our, within our city. Another item is our online permitting and submittals continue to draw excitement from the development community. We've been working toward this goal for some time now. Gail Geiser-Wunsch and the entire permit center team have been providing concierge service by instructing customers through the submittal process. Most of our customers have provided great feedback and the likes, uh, and liked the idea of applying for permits without having to leave their offices. And then the third item is a brag point for one of our, uh, partners that we have. At the June twenty-seventh, uh, Net Health Board meeting, George Roberts announced he'd been named the incoming president of the National Association of County and City Health Officials. Uh, UT Health, uh, Science Center will be hosting reception in his honor on July twenty-fourth, and we're sending invitations out to the full council. And so our community is very well represented with George's continuing leadership with this national organization focused on public health issues.
Well, congratulations, Shirley does a great job, that's, that's a big deal. You done?
That was it, sir.
Okay, so I'll maintain a motion to adjourn?
No, please.
Uh, all in favor, everybody?
Aye.
We all adjourned.